Call to order the Bristol, Tennessee City Council meeting, April 2nd, 2024. Mary Lee, would you call it?
Yes, sir.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Here.
Hutton?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Luttrell?
Here.
Welcome, everyone, and thank you for attending. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. She'd explain in those opportunities have been made available when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up sheet has been provided as you enter council chambers for those individuals desiring to address City Council during the meeting. Like to now ask Vice Mayor Hutton to lead us in our invocation and Councilwoman Powers to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Before I pray, I want to tell you, it's awesome to hear children in the room. So don't worry about it. It's awesome to hear them. So it's great. Absolutely. I think it's great. Let's pray. God, we are indeed grateful for the gifts that you've given us, the gift of children and the noises that they make, Lord, we're grateful for that. Thank you. What a sweet gift that is, Lord. We thank you for this night and the freedoms that you've given us and that you've allowed us all to gather here in this space to do the business of the city, to recognize folks and as well as to make proclamations and to do the legislative work of the city as well. We ask, Lord, that you give us wisdom and discernment to do things in a way that are pleasing to you, that would help this city flourish and go forth. But, Lord, we ask all of this in the powerful and the awesome and the marvelous name of Jesus. Amen.
If you place the flag with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, do we have any additions this evening?
We do not.
Okay. We're going to go to proclamations and recognitions. We're going to change it around a little and we're going to go ahead and do our recognition first. I'll turn it over.
So Chief Austin is going to do the first recognition.
Okay, Chief Austin.
Good evening, and I want to say as we come today, this evening, to come to council, it is with my great honor that we're here to recognize some citizens of Bristol for their outstanding, unfavoring partnership and the things that they did to put themselves above and beyond to try to help in situations. So the first, I'm going to read the recognition and then I'm going to call the recipient up to give them the recognition. And the first recognition is to Fallon and Austin Delp. The city of Bristol, Tennessee expresses its deepest gratitude and admiration to Fallon and Austin Delp for their exceptional vigilance, quick thinking, and unwavering commitment to justice. On the evening of January 18th, 2024, Officer Nicholas Fugate, along with EMS personnel, responded to a crash in the 1900 block of Highway 394, only to face an unforeseen danger when a speeding Chevrolet Avalanche recklessly plowed through the crash scene. Officer Fugate and the EMS personnel sustained significant injuries from the secondary collision caused by the fleeing motorists. At this critical moment, Fallon and Austin Delp, traveling on XI Drive, observed the damaged Chevrolet Avalanche and recognizing its abnormal condition. Unaware of the earlier crash involving emergency personnel, they acted swiftly and responsibly by calling 911 to report the suspicious nature of the vehicle. The Delps further demonstrated exceptional civic duty by carefully observing the suspect as he attempted to conceal the damage of the vehicle in the driveway on Bethel Drive. Their actions were pivotal in aiding law enforcement, specifically the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department, the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department, and the Tennessee Highway Patrol in locating, identifying, and apprehending the suspect. For their courageous and vigilant efforts, which directly contributed to the successful resolution of this incident, Mr. and Mrs. Delp are hereby presented this certificate of recognition for their cooperation and assistance provided invaluable in bringing the suspect to justice, as evidenced by the multiple felony and misdemeanor charges filed against him. This certificate serves as a token of our sincere appreciation and acknowledgement of the Delp's selfless dedication to the safety and well-being of our community. And I, it is with my honor to introduce to you Ms. Fallon Delp. And again, with tremendous honor, I get to recognize, again, looking at something that we work together in this community and the communities around us as far as the partnerships that we build and that are flourishing now to help us live in the great city that we live in. This is a certificate of recognition for Sergeant Samantha Davis. The city of Bristol, Tennessee and the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department express its deepest gratitude and admiration to Sergeant Samantha Davis for her extraordinary bravery and quick thinking during an armed robbery in progress. On the morning of March the 4th, 2024, an armed robbery was in progress at the Scotchman on West State Street in Bristol, Tennessee. Sergeant Davis, a deputy and corrections officer with the Sullivan County Sheriff's Office, stopped at the convenience store unaware of the robbery in progress. Upon entering, upon entry, she encountered the store clerk and the would be robber in an altercation. Sergeant Davis quickly assessed the scene and decisively intervened. Without hesitation, she drew her service weapon and ordered the suspect to the ground. The suspect complied and informed Sergeant Davis that he had a gun, which was only heightened the situation. With the suspect prone on the ground and beginning and being held at gunpoint, Sergeant Davis instructed the clerk to call 911. Another store clerk that was now on the scene was given handcuffs by Sergeant Davis and was instructed to handcuff the suspect. Bristol, Tennessee police officers arrived on the scene shortly after and took the suspect into custody, filing numerous charges. Despite the inherent dangers of the situation, Sergeant Davis maintained her composure and ensured the safety of all involved. Her quick actions were instrumental in bringing the situation under control. Sergeant Samantha Davis's selfless dedication to public safety and her performance under pressure exemplifies the highest standard of law enforcement. Her unwavering commitment to protecting the community serves and is inspiration to us all. This certificate serves as a token of our sincere appreciation and acknowledgement to Sergeant Davis and her selfless dedication to the safety and well-being of our community. Again, it is with my honor to introduce to you Sergeant Samantha Davis. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a Bristol First Recognition, and this month there were three employees from the city Solid Waste Division that were nominated by a community member who witnessed them go above and beyond in service to Bristol's residents. These three individuals are Nathan Michaels, Zach Tittle, and Dylan Gorley. Ms. Ann Dunham is here to present.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's nomination was submitted by community member Tara Moretz on behalf of her parents who live in a mobile home park just off Volunteer Parkway. Tara explained that her parents are still able to live independently for the most part, but limited mobility and health issues often make it difficult for them to do everyday tasks that once came easy to them. One such task is rolling their trash can to the curb on the designated collection day. And if you've ever had an overflowing can, you know what a disaster that can be. Tara went on to explain that she was visiting her parents one day and watched as a three-man crew from the city's Solid Waste Division pulled into the mobile home park, stopped their truck, and went in separate directions, checking the trash can belonging to her parents and many of their neighbors, even those that weren't in the proper spot for pickup. After taking care of those that needed to be emptied, they took a few extra minutes to pick up trash on the ground and make the area look tidy before hopping back in the truck and proceeding to their next stop. Tara said the entire effort took only a few minutes, but she was overwhelmed, not only because of this incredible kindness toward her aging parents, but also because the crew worked so efficiently as a team and demonstrated great pride in their work. She later learned that this wasn't the first time they had gone the extra mile and said, "I haven't always seen this in other places, and I just wanted them to know how much we appreciate it." As you know, the Bristol First Award was created to recognize those who provide exceptional service to the community. Tonight's recipients work under the direction of Public Services Director Wes Ritchie and Solid Waste Crew Chief Tim Arnold, performing an essential duty while also working to improve relations with the public and enhance the image of the city. It's my honor tonight to congratulate Nathan Michaels, Zachary Tittle, and Dylan Gorley for a job well done and ask each of them to come forward to accept the Bristol First Award.
Okay, we have a number of proclamations this evening, and the first one is a proclamation for Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Councilwoman Fire Robin will read the proclamation, and Ms. Haley Griffith, Education Outreach Coordinator for the Community Against Human Trafficking, will accept the proclamation.
I don't have that one. That's, I think we're on Word Wish Month, World Wish Month?
World Wish Month. I have that one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Make-A-Wish was founded by the family and friends of seven-year-old Chris Grecius, who has granted a wish to be a police officer on April 29th, 1980. The organization has since granted more than 585,000 wishes worldwide. Make-A-Wish East Tennessee has granted more than 1,600 wishes over the last 35 years, delivering hope, strength, and joy to a myriad of children with critical illnesses, granting a record-breaking 106 wishes in fiscal year of 2023 alone. Research has shown that wishes can improve a child's quality of life, reduce the number of unplanned hospital visits, and produce better health outcomes. The mayor and council of Bristol, Tennessee encourage the community to support these efforts to improve the quality of life for some of our youngest citizens.
My name is Rebecca Huddleston, and on behalf of the Board of Directors for Make-A-Wish East Tennessee, we would like to thank the city of Bristol and the council for this proclamation and for bringing awareness to the work that we do each and every day. Our chapter serves Knoxville down to Chattanooga, all the way up to Bristol, Tennessee, and we're just very proud of the partnership that we have with Bristol. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next I guess we have National Library Week, and now, Councilwoman.
Okay, and I believe Tanya, Director Tanya Kestner is here, and Brenda Dunn, Financial Director, are here to receive it. So National Library Week is sponsored by the American Library Association and libraries across the country. It's a time to celebrate the contributions of our nation's library and staff and promote library use and support. Libraries support democracy and effect social change through a commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users. Libraries transform lives through innovative educational resources and forward-thinking programming, ever-evolving to best serve our communities and fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technology. Libraries offer services and resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote equity, diversity, and inclusion. The mayor of Bristol, Tennessee encourages all residents to visit their library, explore what's new, and engage with your librarians.
Thank you, Margaret. Good evening, council members and city staff and guests. On behalf of the Bristol Public Library and its dedicated staff, I'm deeply honored to be here, along with Brenda Dunn, who is the Director of Finance for the Bristol Public Library and an employee for 52 years at the Bristol Public Library. So I'm deeply honored to accept this proclamation, recognizing National Library Week. This is a testament to libraries everywhere and their enduring value and importance in our, in our community and their communities. National Library Week celebrates libraries' contributions to society and reminds us of their critical role in fostering literacy, lifelong learning, and civic engagement. At the heart of the Bristol Public Library's staff is the commitment that they have to serve the community, because they, I work with a lot of wonderful people and they do really care about the people that we serve. So we are deeply grateful for the support of the City Council, the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and our community members. Additionally, I'd like to extend special gratitude to Kelly Bujua for her invaluable contributions, as she's taken on the role of the City Manager and has strived to bring both cities together for the benefit of the library, and I really appreciate that. She's put up with me, and I appreciate that. And also furthermore, I want to recognize Councilwoman Margaret Fire Robin's longstanding commitment as a library advocate, volunteer, friend, committee member, library board committee member, and board member and supporter since my tenure at the Bristol Public Library began in 2001. Libraries thrive because of individuals like you, whose passion and support are instrumental in our continued success. So thank you all, thank you for your support, for coming into the library, visiting the library, bringing your kids and your family, and thank you for the monetary support, because we need that as well. And I'm honored to be, I'm honored to work beside this lady, and I'm honored to be the director and continuously humbled to be in the position that I'm, that I'm in. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next we have Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and Vice Mayor Hutton will read, and Ms. Crystal Key, the 911 Director of Communications and Records Manager, will accept the proclamation.
Emergency response is requiring prompt police, fire, or emergency medical services is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. The safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Bristol, Tennessee Police-Fire Communication Center. Public safety telecommunications are the vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities, providing information, and ensuring their safety. Our dispatchers have contributed to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients while exhibiting compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. The mayor of Bristol, Tennessee wishes to honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism help keep our city and citizens safe.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you on behalf of our emergency telecommunications for the recognition of the work that they do. It is very stressful, and they do it with compassion and professionalism for the safety of our responders and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see, we have Start by Believing Day. Councilwoman Powers will read that proclamation. Ms. Brittany Kleiner, the Coordinator, Community Response Specialist of the Branch House, Sullivan County Family Justice Center, will accept the proclamation.
The Branch House is so important to our community. It provides services that victims in our community could not find in any other capacity, and so we commend you and thank you for your efforts. In 2023, there were 32 reported sexual assaults in Bristol, and Branch House Family Justice Center served the needs of 164 sexual assault victims in and around Sullivan County. Current estimates suggest sadly as few as one in five sexual assaults will be reported to law enforcement, and less than 3% will result in the conviction and incarceration of the perpetrator. Research documents victims are far more likely to disclose their sexual assault to a friend or family member, and when these loved ones respond with doubt, shame, or blame, victims suffer additional negative effects. The Start by Believing campaign strives to improve the responses of friends, family, and professionals to help victims access supportive resources and engage in the criminal justice system. The mayor and council of Bristol, Tennessee share a critical concern for victims of sexual violence and desire to support their needs for justice and healing through this public awareness campaign, the Start by Believing Day.
Thank you, Councilwoman Powers, Mayor Turner, and City Council for this wonderful proclamation. It's an honor to be here tonight on behalf of Branch House Family Justice Center to accept it. We have provided free, comprehensive services to victims of domestic violence and sexual assault since 2018. In that time, we've worked with over 400 victims of sexual violence in our region. And as the proclamation states, as few as one in five victims will report that assault. So oftentimes, these victims don't receive the services that they need, and without a report, law enforcement cannot hold offenders accountable, which means that repeat offenders will go undetected, and inevitably, there will be more victims in the future. And so Branch House and the Start by Believing campaign aim to make a profound difference in the lives of survivors by fostering a safe and supportive environment for them to disclose. So we would really like to thank the city of Bristol for your dedication to this cause as well, and we would also like to take this opportunity to thank the men and women of the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department for their dedication and their tenacity whenever they are investigating these very difficult cases. Our partnership really means the world. It takes a community working together to combat sexual and family violence, and we are truly stronger together. So thank you very much.
All right, next we have Fair Housing Month. Vice Mayor Hutton will read the proclamation. We have Ms. Katie Steiger's chair and Mr. Steve Willinger, a member of the Community Development Advisory Committee.
This is the 56th anniversary and enactment of the Fair Housing Act. The legislation passed by Congress in 1968 seeks to eliminate discrimination and opportunities and make housing choices available for all Americans. The ongoing efforts to ensure
The ongoing efforts to ensure equal housing opportunity for all citizens also require state and local government efforts to combat housing discrimination as well. The City of Bristol, Tennessee utilizes the Department of Development Services to implement an effective and responsible fair housing program. The mayor and city council of Bristol, Tennessee encourage the unified efforts of federal, state, and local governments in promoting housing opportunities for all Americans.
On behalf of the other members of the Community Development Advisory Committee, Steve and I are just grateful for the opportunity to serve the community. And one of the things that we do each meeting is to hear from groups that are helping the community with housing, homelessness-related services, and things like that. So, just want to commend all of those groups that are doing the work to bring their housing opportunity to Bristol. I don't want to add anything. On behalf of the committee, thanks so much.
Thanks. All right, next, we have Donate Life Month. And Councilwoman Luttrell will read the proclamation. And Mr. Nick Shepherd, Ex-Digital Affairs Coordinator for the Tennessee Donor Services, will attend to receive the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Tennessee Donor Services is a donate life agency and nonprofit organization dedicated to saving and improving lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation throughout Tennessee. Each organ donor can give the gift of life to eight people, and each tissue donor can improve another 75 lives. Over 3,000 Tennesseans are awaiting organ transplants. The most effective way to address this health crisis is to educate and encourage Tennesseans to commit to registering their decision to be organ, eye, and tissue donators, excuse me, donors in the Donate Life Tennessee Registry. The mayor of the City of Bristol, Tennessee encourages all citizens to become organ, eye, and tissue donors and register their decision.
Thank you so much for this proclamation and, you know, raising awareness about organ and tissue donation. This is the second year in a row you guys have done this for us, and it's much appreciated. Currently, there's 100,000 people on the transplant waiting list, including 3,000 in Tennessee. And so, the only way to combat that is to have everyone get registered, because, you know, less than 1% of people who pass away are able to be organ donors. And so, it just, it takes a large number of registers to, to get the list down. And like I said, one organ donor can save up to eight lives, and one tissue donor can improve the lives of up to 75 people. So, please, when you're out and your community, just talk to people about organ donation, encourage people to get registered, and thank you so much. Help us save some lives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Arbor Day. Councilman Luttrell and Jeremy Stout with our Nature Center is here to receive the proclamation.
Trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, reduce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees are a renewable source, giving us paper products, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other products. Trees increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of a business area, and beautify our community. Arbor/Earth Day is a unique celebration which focuses on the future. The mayor of the City of Bristol, Tennessee urges all citizens to plant trees and commends everyone for their efforts in reforestation our city.
It's been said that planting a tree is a wholly unselfish act, because it's something that we do not for our generation, but those that come entirely after us. So, Bristol, Tennessee is a Tree City, USA. This is a national certification from the Arbor Day Foundation, and this is absolutely something for Bristol to be proud of. Tennessee has more certified tree cities than 80% of other U.S. states, and Bristol has held its Tree City, USA certification for 36 years, which makes us among the longest serving in the state of Tennessee. So, this proclamation is not only a necessary part of that certification, it's also a continuing commitment to that investment in our future. So, on behalf of the Tree City, USA and the Department of Parks and Recreation, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month that I will read, and Ms. Amber Mays is here to accept the proclamation. Autism Spectrum Disorder, ASD, is the fastest-growing developmental disorder yet is the most underfunded. Often autistic individuals look like everyone else, but may communicate, interact, behave, and learn in different ways from other people. ASD affects 1 in 36 children and is four times more common among boys than among girls. This disorder impacts all people of all races, ethnicities, and socioeconomic group. However, many children do not receive a formal diagnosis until they are much older. All year, but especially during the month of April, we strive to bring awareness, acceptance, education, inclusion, and self-determination to all and assure that each individual with ASD is given a chance to achieve the highest possible quality of life. The mayor of Bristol, Tennessee urges our citizens to help create awareness and acceptance for this disorder in our community.
I'm here tonight on behalf of my beautiful, amazing daughter, Ivy, and many, many others. I'm really looking forward to Bristol continuing to do big, big things for our autistic children and adults. I've been encouraged by the things that I've seen happen in our journey so far. So, I'm encouraged that we can do more, because they deserve it. They deserve to be seen. They deserve to be heard. They deserve to be loved. They deserve to be accepted, and they deserve to be included. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, lastly, we have Week of the Young Child. Councilwoman Fire-Robin and Ms. Samantha Gray with the Appalachian Promise Alliance will receive the proclamation.
Thank you. The first years of a child's life are the period of most rapid brain development and lay the foundation for all future learning. Children's cognitive, physical, social, and emotional, and language and literacy development are built on a foundation of children's positive interactions with adults, peers, and their environment. Support of early childhood parenting and education saves taxpayers' dollars, makes working families more secure, and prepares children to succeed in school, earn higher wages, and live healthier lives. The Strong Accountable Care Community is a coalition of more than 400 organizations in northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia. The Appalachian Promise Alliance is an active member and has its own coalition that, supporting children, youth, and families that continues after 25 years of focus together here in our Bristol area, working to improve physical, social, and economic health, especially by building a robust continuum of care, early care and education from birth to eight years. The mayor of Bristol, Tennessee recognizes that investing in educators is also invested in parents, is also investing in children and families, and urges all members of our community to support efforts that increase children and families' access to high-quality early childhood education and parenting.
Thank you, City Council, for proclaiming Week of the Young Child. I'm Samantha Gray with Appalachian Promise Alliance, where our mission is to mobilize our communities to meet the basic needs of each child, youth, and family, while promoting the development of their character, faith, and educational potential. Begun in 1971, the Week of the Young Child is essential, because it highlights early childhood education's critical role in a child's development between birth and age eight. This period lays the foundation for children's success at learning and in later-life relationships. The Week of the Young Child provides an opportunity for educators, parents, and communities to come together and advocate for policies and programs that support young children and their families. The first programs related to early childhood education are those supporting parents, as they are their child's first teacher. John Bowlby stated, "If we value our children, we must cherish their parents." As parents, we can recognize we can open ourselves to all we have to learn, and as communities, we can do the same and work to support parents and educators. For parents with children in early childhood education programs, we can ensure educators are supported by being paid well and well-prepared, so there is high-quality consistency in the care of our most precious. We urge the community to consider the investments we make in our very young children, so that they are raised with resilience-building, proven, positive childhood experiences, and healthy, secure attachment. The Week of the Young Child, this Week of the Young Child, we're challenged to step it up. Help raise awareness, volunteer, take a parenting class, support an educator, advocate for child, quality childcare, become trained as an educator or provider, and hug, love, and play with our children, build their brains, and help them flourish. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have no presentations this evening, and next is our Board of Education Report. Dr. Tudor?
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. A couple of weeks ago, during spring break, we had our traditional spring intercession, where we invite students who need a place to go during spring break to come and spend time in our schools. We have that at every grade level. Elementary is housed at Fairmount. We have it at middle school and high school as well. We hosted about 50 children during the three-day span of that period. But this, this spring, we did something unique, and we had Safety Day. And during Safety Day, the Bristol Police, Fire, and Rescue and the Sullivan County Anti-Drug Coalition came and presented a variety of activities for our students at the elementary school at Fairmount. I hear there was a pretty exciting dodgeball game going on that happened, actually. So, I just wanted to say thank you. Officer Chesney Rourke is the one who organized that. She, we invited her to bring the dog, and she turned it into an amazing event. So, we are grateful for that and the partnership we have with, with those organizations. Certainly, our students learned a variety of safety interventions and certainly had a great time doing that. So, thank you for that partnership. Want to recognize that this week is National Assistant Principals Week, and we have some stellar folks who really work behind the scenes. They are the, kind of the heartbeat of schools, if you know anything about those folks. So, I wanted to take a moment to recognize them. At Tennessee Middle School, we have Vonda Beavers, Jeff Mustard, and Carlinda Shaw. At Tennessee High School, we have Dave Collins, Luke Douthat, Paul Pendleton, Ashley Shue, and Kelly Vance. And then, at the elementary level, we have Amanda White at Anderson, Sherry Hutton at Avoca, Jeremy Culbertson and Tracy Easterling at Fairmount, Allison Dowdell at Haynesfield, and Tim Smith at Holston View. Those folks are, are stellar individuals, and we certainly couldn't operate our schools efficiently and effectively. They are responsible for discipline and safety and a whole host of other things. So, wanted to give them their due diligence and recognize them. Also, want to thank you all for your proclamation for Arbor Day. We annually celebrate that in our school district, and we actually benefit from a partnership with BTES, Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services. Purchases a tree for us every year, and we rotate schools. And actually, Jeremy Stout comes and presents that, you know, little presentation to our students, and he allows them to help plant that tree. This year, it's at Anderson Elementary. On May 3rd, you all are welcome to come and join us for that event if you would like. We'd love to have you there. But we appreciate that annual partnership with both the city, city staff come and prep the, the site and get the tree ready for us. And BTES obviously donates the tree, and Jeremy comes every year, and it's, it's a great event, so we appreciate that. And then, just a couple of dates to remember. This Thursday, pre-K and kindergarten registrations begins for next school year, if you can believe that. We're already talking about that. So, from 4:00 to 6:00, that's a drop-in at all of our elementary schools. On Monday, if you haven't heard, there's going to be a solar eclipse. We are actually releasing students early on Monday, so they can experience that phenomenon with their families. So, Tennessee High and Tennessee Middle School will dismiss at 11:45, and elementary schools at 12:30. All of our students will get solar eclipse glasses, so they can safely watch that with their families. They'll also get a moon pie and some sun chips. Our school nutrition department is going to make it as fun as possible for them. If you can believe it, T-CAP testing starts soon. That begins on April 15th, so that'll be the last two weeks of April. We also are organizing a Power of Play Youth Sports Day. We've annually, through our coordinated school health department, have a Power of Play 5K. This year, we're transitioning that to a Youth Sports Day. It'll be on May 4th at the Tennessee Middle School Track from 9:00 to 1:00. It's a free event for all students in K through 5. There'll be track and field events. Our book bus will be there, community vendors, and there's going to be a family fun walk. So, it's just a family engagement opportunity. Summer Stream Camp registration is open for students in incoming kindergarten all the way through eighth grade. That's free to students basically the whole month of June. And then, just a reminder, if you want to keep up with our progress in the Stone Castle, if you haven't been by, you're welcome to come by anytime, but we also have updates on our website. So, if you haven't seen that lately, it's lots of things happening in there. Do you all have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is our Parents of Citizens, and there was a sign-up sheet as you enter chambers. Doesn't look like anyone signed up, but is there anyone in attendance that would like to address council? All right. Next, we will move on to appointments. We have one candidate for the Beer Board, Mr. James Ruggel. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
Yeah. Spent a few minutes on the phone with Mr. Ruggel, and he's very eager to get involved in our community, and just a great gentleman, and I think he'll do some good work.
All right.
Ditto. I spoke with him also, very excited, and hopefully, this will be a beginning of some other involvement in our community.
Councilwoman Fire-Robin has James Ruggel. Councilman Luttrell has James Ruggel. Vice Mayor Hutton has James Ruggel. Councilwoman Powers has James Ruggel. And Mayor Turner has James Ruggel.
Okay. Next, we have one position open for the Bristol Housing Board, and we have three candidates: Katina Bowers, Jacqueline Edmonds, and Vernon Perry Jr. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of?
I'll be glad to speak. And first off, I want to say it's great to have three applicants, and this is for a resident member, so it's, has particular qualifications. And I've spoken with all three and know one or two of them. So, anyway, and Katina Bowers is in our homeownership program, so she's familiar with things. Vernon Perry has served on the CDAC, Christina's Committee. And Jacqueline Edmonds is a resident at Shelby Towers and is active with the resident council there. And... And I think all three are very good candidates. I'm going to support Jackie Edmonds in that position going forward.
Councilwoman Fire Robin has Jacqueline Edmonds. Mayor Turner has Vernon Perry. Councilman Luttrell has Jackie Edmonds. Vice Mayor Hutton has Vernon Perry. And Councilwoman Powers has Vernon Perry.
And I think Mr. Perry's here in the back.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 24-3 and ordinance amending Chapter 18 of Business Temporary Campgrounds of the Code of Ordinances. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Young's not able to be with us tonight, but she sends her apologies. So I'll be talking to you about the temporary campground ordinance. We discussed this at the work session. The primary purpose of the temporary campground ordinance is to make some changes that will define better who can have a temporary campground in the city of Bristol. We add definitions for a campsite that's used by a single tent, RV, camping trailer, camper van. We introduce the concept of the temporary campground zone, where temporary campsites would be permitted. And that zone is a two-mile radius of Bristol Motor Speedway. So you would basically draw a circle two miles out from the infield, which is shown on the map up there. And if you're located within that circle, you would be able to get a temporary campground permit. We're asking that in the application, the operator identify the dates of operation for the campground, so that they would be telling us in advance when they plan to operate. And we're adding additional minimum requirements, including fire extinguishers, insurance, 15-foot spacing requirements between campsites, and explicit language that they may operate for a maximum period of 14 days, but they can have up to six such periods during the year. We had started out with two, but council felt like that was too restrictive, and so the new language that's being presented tonight has six periods of 14 days consecutively during the calendar year. We also, as discussed at the work session, have language in here that allows council to provide by resolution that permit holders can operate for additional periods of 14 or fewer consecutive days if there are events that justify it. So council could adopt a resolution and say, because of an event that's happening, we want to give everybody an extra period of operation as a temporary campground. One other thing, the ordinance doesn't specify an effective date, so it would be effective 17 days after second reading, which is May 24th, but it does not repeal or impact permits that have already been issued. And so permits, and the campground permits are issued for a calendar year. And so permits that have already been issued as the date of the effective date of the ordinance are not touched. It would impact people as you move into the following calendar year, or anybody who's applying for a permit after that May 24th date. But to the extent that many of our campgrounds have already asked for permits, this year is not going to be impacted for them. I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Anyone have any questions? Have a motion?
I have a motion to approve ordinance 23-4 as amended.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council on this matter? Seen none. Mary, would anyone like to discuss this? Mary Lee?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
All right, next, we have ordinance 24-4 amending Chapter 62. I guess, Ms. Smith, you will present on this also.
I'll be happy to. This item came up as we were talking about the special events ordinance that's going to be on second reading tonight. Council had discussions at a February work session about whether we should be allowing retail businesses to have temporary permits for sidewalk sales during special events downtown, and the consensus was yes. So we talked about the ordinance changes at our meeting on, at the work session last week. The ordinance that's being presented to you creates a new category of temporary sidewalk permit that's a temporary retail sales area permit. While it's replacing the entire language of the temporary permits, the only real change is the existence of the retail sales area. This permit would allow an existing active retail business to expand onto the sidewalk and even into the street as permitted by the permit during special events when the street in front of the retail business is closed. There were additional clarifying changes, such as clarifying that these permits do terminate, they're not a permanent permit, they are temporary, and that people should have insurance as required by administrative policy of the city manager. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Have a motion?
I have a motion to approve ordinance 24-4 as amended.
Second.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mary Lee?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
All right, next, we have ordinance 24-2, second reading for special events.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance, again, we've discussed at a couple of work sessions. We discussed it additionally at the March work session. I noted at the March work session that there is language that should have been deleted, and so what is being presented to you, has that language deleted? If you look at the second page of your packet, I believe, there's a red line that shows what has been deleted. So the ordinance itself that is before you no longer contains that language. It's been amended as recommended by council during the work session. Aside from that, we've discussed this ordinance pretty extensively, so I'll be happy to summarize more about what's changing, but other than that, I'll just answer any questions that you have.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 24-2, second reading.
Second.
A motion and a second. Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Could we amend that motion to include language that's approved as amended from at the work session, is what we have?
Yes, I mean, you could move to amend the motion to, or we could just withdraw it and step back, and Councilwoman Fire Robin could make the motion again. That may be easier.
I didn't make the motion.
Oh, sorry.
I'll withdraw my second.
Sorry. Councilman Luttrell?
Yeah, I'll withdraw the original motion and like to approve 24-2 under second reading as amended.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Good catch.
Mary Lee?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
All right, next, we have Resolution 24-32, adopting a new mission statement and vision statement for the city of Bristol.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Martin?
On February 29th and March 1st, the city council met with department director-level staff with facilitator Peter Auger from MTAS. We held a two-day strategic planning session, which I think was very, very helpful for staff, and I think we got a lot out of that and look forward to future strategic planning sessions as well. One of the significant outcomes of that session was a new mission statement and a new vision statement, as well as a list of goals that were established by the city council. Tonight, I'm asking that you approve the new mission statement, which is building a sense of home for all through exceptional service and community engagement, and a new vision statement, which is where our community's values guide each interaction and decision as we make Bristol stronger every day. And if you wish to approve that, it's Resolution 24-32, and once adopted, we will incorporate those statements in our documents and really make it part of our daily culture with our employees.
Motion to approve Resolution 24-32.
Well, Lee, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council on this? All right.
I stand with my motion for Resolution 24-32.
Okay, we have a motion, second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seen none?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
All right. Lastly, with our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda tonight is, first, the minutes of the March 5th city council meeting. Next is the minutes of the March 26th city council work session. Then we have adoption of Resolution 24-33, authorizing the purchase of SmartGov permitting software through the Omniop Partners Cooperative Purchasing Association. And finally, approval of Resolution 24-34, authorizing the city to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement with the city of Johnson City.
Okay. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to address council on this? Would any member of council like an item removed from the consent agenda?
I think on behalf of the public, just for the public's greater understanding, Resolution 24-34, as to the resolution authorizing the city to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement with Johnson City, what exactly does that mean?
I'll let Danielle start, and then I'll fill in if...
It is a resolution that allows Johnson City, or it's an agreement that will allow Johnson City to give us information about water customers of theirs who have Bristol, Tennessee city sewer, so that we will be able to then run their bills, which is, it's very, it's very important, but also very...
So we have to send our own staff out to read those meters for just our sewer service, which is very time-consuming. And by entering into this agreement, because Johnson City's already reading those meters, they can share that data with us, and it's a significant savings for our meter-reading staff.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mary Lee?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
We have our city managers' report.
Thank you. Just a few things coming up here to go over. We have coffee with Chief Austin. That's tomorrow at 9:00 AM at Food City on Virginia Avenue. Explore Bristol's Groundbreaking. Hopefully, you've all received your invitations, hopefully a couple of times. We had, I think, a bit of an email glitch there. That is also tomorrow at 2:00 PM. The Music City press announcement is Thursday at 10:00 AM, and that's at the Birthplace of Country Music Museum. The Paramount Bristol Story movie, thanks to our Director of Community Engagement, that is, looks to be amazing. That will be shown at Paramount Bristol on Saturday, April 13th, at 7:30. The doors open at 6:30. It's free, but people do need a ticket, so anyone in the audience or anyone at home that wants to attend that event should go to the Paramount website and get their tickets. Again, I saw just a little sneak peek of it, and it looks very, very good. That's all that I have.
Okay. City Council, come in. Who wants to go first?
I can go first. I just wanted to recognize again the awards that were received, the recognitions tonight, and just to say how significant they are and how important it is to take time to recognize people. Also, to recognize our, this is with talking about the Week of the Young Child, and we've had several young children here today. Thank you, Councilwoman Hutton, for welcoming them as well, so, pretty nice. Also, on the libraries, in the proclamation, it talks about it's all libraries, so it's not just our public library, it's our school libraries. And Jeremy's not here right now, but our nature center has built a phenomenal library. It has books in it that are the only ones in our close-by region, so it's quite extensive that they've built with donations and with purchase from friends, donations, et cetera, to purchase some special volumes. So, and they're not for checkout, they're for using on the premises. They also have children's books as well. So just want to recognize it's for all libraries. And I might have tuned out, but I think, and Mike Maynes can confirm, but the Lions Club, the Bristol Host Lions Club Shelter at Steel Creek Park, gonna, kind of dedicate it on the 19th, I think, at 11:00 probably? Great. And if y'all will remember, that's one they sponsored originally, and then, I believe, a tree pretty much destroyed it, and it, they participated with funding to be sure that it was replaced. Also, coming up, and I need to remember to send out stuff to council, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Alliance of Northeast Tennessee and Southwest Virginia is putting on their third conference, and it's from about 8:00 to 2:00 on May 17th, and some pretty great speakers and workshops that's going to be part of that. So it'd be great to have folks from the community as well as our council. Their focus is what diversity, equity, and inclusion does for economic development, and how critical it is, and particularly in our region where we do not, we have less diversity than some other parts in our country. So trying to really work on that to help with creativity and doing well with economic development. So I think that's it. Till I think of something else.
Yeah, I'd just like to go back and thank the two individuals that, you know, pretty much put their life on the line in assisting aid to our police officers, one that, you know, apprehend some fugitives, and I think it's just awesome that people from the communities coming forward and helping out, just, you know, putting herself before service.
I have just a few things. With the BCM in the Pines is June 1st. Tickets may be purchased online if you go to the Birthplace of Country Music website. Additionally, Bristol Rhythm and Roots tickets are available. We've got a tremendous lineup for both of those events. Networks continues working, and I know our property committee is at work, and it's a problem to have that we may soon find ourselves in a need for even additional land. Working with the planning and the IDB, I have begun some due diligence about something that we've taken on at our work session last week, a special assessment to help developers as well as property owners, and trying to put all of that together. I've spoken with our city manager and have requested that we have a joint meeting between council, planning, and the IDB, so that we can get as much input as possible as we try to hone this additional tool to its greatest asset. Of course, the final decision in any type of legislation like this related to a special assessment would fall to council, but I'm sure we could all agree that we have a lot of great minds on both of those commissions and committees to work diligently to help us put that together. So I had asked Ms. Bujawar to try to work towards doing a joint meeting if it was the appetite and will of council, and I would hope that it would be. So that's really all that I've got. I think that as many tools as we can possibly have to move our community forward through economic development, whether it's commercial or whether it's through residential, is important, and it's important to involve as many of our residents as possible. That's all I've got.
I guess, as far as that meeting, I guess if they wanted to, from my standpoint of a work session, I mean, are you asking, so you want the entire planning and IDB board and...
Well, there's some overlap with both of those, and it would just give us a great opportunity. We haven't had a joint meeting in quite some time with either of those. So whether it's set up as a separate meeting or as a pre-meeting to our meeting, however the city manager deems it appropriate.
Yeah, and I think that sounds good. In the past, we scheduled, I think, quarterly meetings with those boards, meeting together, sometimes BTES with us as well, and just trying to work together with, and it might be good to even have, if we're talking residential, to possibly have Bristol Housing participate as well.
I think it'd be good to have BTS also in that also.
Because utilities that would be involved.
And we have our CEO here, Clayton, is, thank you for joining us this evening, and Commissioner Harvey is here with us, but... Harvey is here with us, but I don't have anything else, so we're adjourned.